I'd have to say what I really enjoy about Happy State Bank is the morale that we have. Part of that goes back to the ownership that we talked about. Everybody understands as an owner, we're going to think like owners, not like managers, and we truly have each other's back each and every day. So this is teamwork, everyone works so hard for each other, knowing that the ultimate goal is that each one of our customers is going to leave this bank, knowing that we have given them everything we have as bankers to exceed any expectations they had out of our bank.
... 2011 regularly scheduled meeting of the February zoning commission. The zoning commission consists of seven committee members, all of us from here. That meeting is to consider public hearings and zoning requests, final plans, amendments to the zoning forms. Item will be taken in order as they appear on the agenda. After each item on the agenda is called, a map of the item will be shown, and Kelly Shaw will read the staff report and present the recommendation. The commission should make a decision by motion and vote. Anyone wishing to speak on any item will be heard. Please assist us when we ensure that the minutes are correct at filling out and returning to the recording secretary. Speaker's form is available on the table on the foyer. All parties speaking shall come to the front, giving name and address for the record, and shall address all remarks to the board. All those speaking for request shall be heard first, and those against would be heard second. Debates shall be allowed for both for and against speakers. After all parties have been heard, any questions the board members have answered, the chairman shall declare the discussion of the public hearing clubs. Forers would speak. First, commissioners ask questions, against, and then forers in rebuttal, against in rebuttal. So we'll start with item one on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the October 10th meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
I believe we approved the minutes of last meeting.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Seeing this discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, motion passed. Item two on the agenda, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two concerns the zoning request Z-11-28. It concerns the rezoning of the east half of Lot 9 Beverly Gardens. Unit number two in section 158, block 2, AVNM surveys in Potter County. The request is to change from residential district one to residential district one with a specific use permit for replacement of a type A manufactured home. Type A manufactured home indicates that it's built between 1976 and the current year. In order to place the manufactured home on this lot, a certified real estate appraiser had to prepare a market analysis indicating that the replacement of the manufactured home would have any negative impacts on the surrounding area. The market analysis submitted by the applicant in this situation indicates that there would be no adverse impact on the surrounding area. If the request was approved, this particular area does have several other manufactured homes in the area, sort of an open rural type area right on the edge of some traditional subdivisions of single-family house development. And the homes in this area are older, some are in fairly decent condition, some are not. Like I mentioned, there are several other manufactured homes in the area, five which are in a two-block radius of this particular property. This particular manufactured home, I would say, not only fits into the character of the area, but is actually in better condition probably than many of the other homes in the area, given the market analysis submitted and the condition of the area, and this being able to fit within the character of the area, staff recommends approval as submitted.
Okay. Any questions from the commission before we get to the audience to speak? Would you like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone like to speak against this item? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. See, on that, that's 28, that's written.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to approve. I see Z-11-28 in discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, and opposed. Motion passed. Item three.
Item three is our zoning case filed Z-11-29. It's the rezoning of a 4,000-square-foot tract of land at the southeast corner, Lot 1, Block 27, Pocket Place, Unit Number 16. It's in section 28, Lot 9, VSNF survey. It's in Randall County. The request is to change from general retail district to planned development district for a lot automotive repair shop. The applicant is actually requesting planned development zoning in order to operate a just-for-ex automotive shop within the Pocket Plaza Shopping Center. The proposed location for the business would be at the in-cat space on the southeast corner of the retail strip center, directly adjacent to Bell Street. This particular area is in a heavy commercialized area with several well-established retail uses, both at the Pocket Place Shopping Center, the Pocket Plaza Shopping Center, as well as across to the east, as well as across to the northeast and northwest. As we discussed in our pre-session, this particular area follows the neighborhood unit concept to a T, basically, given the retail uses on the hard corners of arterial intersections and then with the high-density residential development behind this particular place. Given the area that has been established and looking at the shop itself, at first staff felt that this was an automotive use that didn't fit neatly within the general retail scope of an auto tune-up shop, which is allowed in general retail district. But when looking at the scope of work that was provided by the applicant, as well as looking at the definition of tune-up shop within our zoning ordinance, staff was of the opinion that a lot of what they were doing, although not neatly defined or addressed in our parent zoning ordinance, was very similar to what a tune-up shop would be considered, that being basically repairs that could be done all indoors, storage of equipment, supplies, those kinds of things would all be done indoors. There would be no overnight outdoor storage of vehicles or equipment. And that with certain development standards, which they did submit, would combine that to have the shop be more similar to a tune-up shop than what we would consider a typical commercial automotive repair shop. So we had them submit a scope of work as well as other development standards that would include hours of operation being 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, no outdoor storage or displays of any kind, as well as no overnight parking of vehicles would be allowed. All work would be conducted indoors, and that any exterior building changes, be that paint or whatever, would still need to be in character with the existing shopping center. Anything that's not specifically addressed with those development standards would be substituted, our standard general retail zoning district development standards. So combined with the existing character of the area, the development standards, staff felt that planned development zoning was appropriate. We would recommend approval of the request. We did send out property unit notices to everybody within 200 feet. We did get one call from the apartment owner to the south, who said that they did have some concerns, they didn't know if they were for it or against it, but they just wanted to basically know what would it be and what would be the type of activity going on. We had not heard back from that particular caller at this time. The staff would recommend that the request be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioner over here in the audience? Would anyone like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone like to speak against this item? Come forward to give us your name and address.
I'm Mark Christie, and I live at 9600 TJ Drive, owned on a house at 5712 Dixon, which is in that 200-foot zone, and lived there. I want to tell you a little bit about that. I also have my partner here, and we recently purchased the Pocket Place apartment complex. But when I was living on Dixon Street, and I've had that house for a long time, probably most of 30 years, maybe a little more, there was a service station that was right in the back of that house for years before they got that banking center there, and I lived there during that time. And I realize you've got some restrictions on this that might help some of the things that I had going on with that service station. But there you would have, for some reason, I don't know, there would be a truck or trucks, and they would be running the engines even at night, in the middle of the night. There may be, there was a reason for that, but that would happen often. And I realize, I've read the restrictions you mentioned, and so maybe that would be prevented. But I worry about opening that door a little bit, moving in that direction, and maybe these folks will be great, and I worry, long-term, who's the next tenant? And that door's open, so where do you go from there? With respect to Pocket, and that's where my major investment is, Pocket was a complex that was, there were several folks that were interested in the group of apartment complexes, but frankly, Pocket was sort of a toxic complex to the group. Most folks didn't want it. They were afraid of it. It's not very well occupied right now. I think it's 15% occupied. And we've got a lot of plans to, and have recently started, developing things to really upgrade Pocket, to take it to a really great level. But it's kind of on a precipice in a sense, and we're afraid, anything that might be a negative towards that, it is a concern for us, and we think this could be possibly that, or at least it might open the door for that. You mentioned that there was no overnight parking, and there would be no vehicles outdoors, and if that's followed, that would sure help alleviate some things. But then again, how long does that get placed? If that threatens, so I just see this as possibly opening the door, or something like that. That's my concern.
Any questions for him?
Mr. Shaw, sir. I'd like to address some of that. Those are valid concerns, and yes, there would not be the ability to have any kind of delivery trucks parked there or staged there, other than the hours of operation. One of the things that we do take seriously, and why we work with the applicant on the planned development, is that we want that to try as much as possible to retain the retail nature of it thereby. Given their type of material and equipment, we would not allow any outdoor stores or any displays or any of those kinds of things to hopefully retain that character. Also, with the building itself, any changes would still have to be in character with the existing shopping center there, with the requirement that all activities have to remain indoors. So we really try to take into account the impact on not only the surrounding properties, but to try to keep intact the retail nature of that area. And like we said, we would allow a lube shop or a tune-up shop, that kind of thing is allowed in general retail district anyway. We felt that it was very similar to that. The other side of that is, that tenant space has been vacant for a while, has had other spaces there, and so we kind of wanted to try to balance, one of the older shopping centers, to try to maintain tenant space. If we get something in there that we feel could fit in there, we thought it would be good overall to maintain the activity and that space still being viable as a retail hub. Because what we don't want to see is more and more vacant spaces, because once it crosses into that territory, it can go downhill very quickly, and then you have the overall effect on the surrounding neighborhood of the vacant shopping centers a lot worse. And so we try to balance those two things.
Well, and I can give you, I'm sorry to go ahead.
No, that's all right, sir.
I'll give you an analogy that's not great, but with some of these complexes, one of the things that we have tried to do is to improve the populations and set standards and high criteria for accepting new tenants into those communities. And it's very tempting, because we've had a lot of vacancy to deal with, to degrade that sort of criteria, because we could fill these things up pretty easily and take care of our vacancy. But I think, we have tried very hard not to do that and to keep those standards high. And I understand vacancies are not something you want. And I'm very pro-development. I admire the way Amrel has been pro-development. But I just don't want to see anything done that could be considered a degradation of what might be there. And I understand where you're coming from, but I just see this as maybe opening a door where we could move potentially in that direction, if not now, maybe in the future, if we didn't have, go strictly the plans.
And as far as enforcement, any kind of violation, because usually if there is violation, we hear about it.
Okay.
And being such a visible in-cat, we would know about it, and we would write that business is only violation, just like with anybody else that can get very expensive, and if need be, kick the business out. Any precedent that may be set, we would be very cognizant of the fact that whatever did come in the future would still be held the same standards and everything else, because we still want to try as best we can to maintain that retail character. And so we wouldn't, any other development, we would apply the same logic to, and the same process and that kind of thing. Given the scope of work that they turned in, we really tried to make sure, because we've had this happen before with not a brake shop, but we've had a business that says they're a tune-up shop, then it turned into minor transmission repair, that then turned into, and it was a real battle, that they, this is a national chain that only does very specific things, and we felt like we were not getting into that.
Well, and we probably had some of the same. I know you mentioned that when this first came out, you thought, well, it's not a good fit, and then you became more comfortable with it, apparently. So I guess I would just say, I haven't gotten there personally, because I stand here in opposition to it. I think sometimes, too, we just have to be careful about getting comfortable with something and making it good. But I'm not saying you have done good due diligence, but again, I'm not there yet, so...
Appreciate you coming, Chris. Any questions from the commissions? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
I'm Paul Christie. I live at 7719 Bentry. And let's see, I would just like to say that Mark and I got the property on March 1st in a foreclosure deal along with three other complexes, and today I already spent $2 million on other three complexes. Been done a little landscaping work, but not much money at all. It's been on Pocket Place. At the time that we got it, it was low-income housing. It's not low-income housing anymore. One of the provisions that that provides, far as never been, city property tax. For 10 or 12 years, there was no city property tax on that property. And we feel like to do to the larger group because of the location, because of the basic nature of the property, it's still in a position that it can be put back into place. That's the plan we try to do. See this as being a small step in the wrong direction. The commercial or industrial definition of this property right on the perimeter of general retail, in my opinion, is kind of the wrong approach. You'd want to have it more embedded in the general retail, and then more embedded in the general retail, and then something that's more of a buffer. If I were living across the alley from that property in my home, I'd rather there not be a shop that works on vehicles across the alley. And when we bought the property, there wasn't. And now it appears that there's a good chance there will be, and that's somewhat disturbing. I called the city, and as soon as I got the notice, I called the city. I didn't know whether they were totally against it or possibly for it. I had no idea. Trying to find information, the characterization, and I wasn't either for or against it was somewhat wrong, just like I think that the actual outcome of this could be somewhat or a lot wrong, and that is my concern, and that's why I'd much rather not see it there. I guess just putting that in a little better perspective, if I were living right across the alley from that property, I'd rather not see it there, and I'd rather not see this happen, this place that fixes vehicles up. And we're going to have a lot of people, it's not going to be us, but it's our investment, and it will be people that are going to be in that exact situation. So coming here, kind of on behalf of the investment, trying to help put this in a better position. I know these apartment complexes have been a problem for the city, to say the least, and we're already today, in a few months, have taken it in a huge direction the other way, and I see this as being a setback for the worst of the four complexes. But I guess I'm definitely opposed to it, and I think it'll hurt, it'll hurt the complex that, so it hurts Pocket Place apartments.
I have a question for you. If this were just left to be general retail, it would allow an oil change and a tune-up, if I'm right, without plumbing gas? This is not a great deal different from that, plus it's a planned development, so we put in some standards that will make it a little bit safer. So I just want you, I want you to be clear that if it's left alone, it could still be an oil change.
Yes, I'm well aware of that, but just as the property across the street was left alone, it went from being a filling station to a bank, which was a huge improvement. So the idea that you downgrade the zoning with the idea that there's a possibility there could be something as bad anyway, in my way, my feeling, my thinking, doesn't make sense.
Let me ask you a question. The, in general retail, I suppose closing hours could be much later, 6:00 p.m., but this period is specified at 6:00 p.m. Does that make a difference to you?
It's preferable 6:00 p.m., but in my thinking, and my feeling is, it's much preferable to leave the zoning the way it is. Sure, you could point out later, the possibility of things moving in that are just as bad, even possibly worse. There's always, could be that argument, but my thinking is, I don't want to degrade the zoning on the property that just affects me and right next to me, right across the alley, because there could be things happening that would be maybe just as bad, well, there could be a lot better things happening, too.
Any other questions?
Mr. Christie, are you aware that when they change, when we change this to planned development, that it is specific for what they can put there, and that if they go and change, then anybody who buys it comes in there and has to comply with the same planned development that we're looking at right now? They can't come in and put something else in there. So there's quite a bit of restriction on it. It's an upgrade rather than a downgrade, in my opinion.
Well, you certainly have a right to that opinion, but it's my opinion that it's a downgrade, and I know that that restriction's there. I very clearly understood that. And I had another apartment complex, Paramount Place Apartments, that was close to 34th and Western, that had a shop that replaced windshields, which had a trailer get out of control and ran into the complex, caused considerable damage. But that's just, I don't know, things can happen, and I'd much rather not see this go there than I had see this go there. I understand that if it's relaced or resold or whatever else, they still have to comply with certain aspects of the planned development, but it is, industrial is worse than general retail. Commercial, it's more of a, it is, in my opinion, obvious that it's, I'd rather have a lot of other things back there than someone working on vehicles.
Well, that's a lot in general retail.
So why are they changing the zoning?
Well, I think certain types of automotive type repair are allowed in general retail, not what I would call typical automotive repair. This would be, again, this is based on what we consider to be more of a tune-up type automotive repair rather than a full automotive repaired shop that's allowed in my commercial model.
You said it's like a tune-up shop? Is that what it is, a tune-up shop?
We don't have a specific definition in our zoning ordinance of a light shop, but we do allow, we do allow tune-up shops in general retail, which include things like lube shops. There's a definition that includes, I'll read you the definition. It includes establishments for the retail sale of petroleum products, automobile accessories, minor automobile tune-ups, muffler installations, oil change, other lubricative services, which all services provide, provided, and all storage, supplies, parts, equipment, accessories are indoors. This definition does not include any major automotive repairs, such as engine or transmission exchange or overhauls. So given that definition, the types of businesses that we have, whereby you bring it in, it's done indoors, you leave, it's not an overnight type thing, their scope of work fit more closely with that than it did general automotive repair, when they did engine work and those kinds of things that are allowed in my commercial districts.
And another change is, there's no...
Like a Michael's muffler shop? Michael's muffler shop would be allowed to go in there.
Okay, but at this point, there's not, in that retail shopping center, there's no penetrations on that end building. I certainly understand, you could make a scenario where someone is bad or worse, possibly, to go in there, but it's my opinion, it's my opinion, this would be a downgrade and harmful to us and to that property. downgrade and harmful to us and to that property, to the Pocket Place property. And I fully understand the restrictions. I fully understand, you know, what everyone's been talking about.
Any other questions, comments? Ordinarily, I'd ask for those in favor, because there's no one else here. So I'd ask for, again, if you'd like to speak.
I don't have anything else. Thank you all for your consideration.
I was just going to ask a question. Should I approach?
Please.
Okay. Thank you. My question is this, it's more than a visual thing, but I don't know, I get, when I hear about automotive brake repair, I get this sort of, I spent my college days working at a truck, truck equipment company. They did a lot of brake work. Anyway, I get this, I hear the sound of compressors and those compressor guns that you take wheels off, and, you know, that kind of noise that emanates from those kind of places. So is there, and you may have covered, is there a noise restriction here or something? Because I can just see people, you know, living in units, retired a hundred feet from there, that are listening to that, and maybe it stops at six o'clock, but that's loud, and so I don't know.
We did submit a noise study, and, you know, basically speaking, it didn't create any adverse noise, other than what would be created by a normal, you know, retail hub, you know, traffic and other noises. They didn't go above any decibel level that would not be, you know, comparable to, you know, other type uses in the area. We didn't make that part of the development standards, but they did submit a noise study. We didn't see anything that was, would be impactful to where it would be a problem.
Where is the closest one of these? You said it's at large chains, and where, do you know where it's located at? I might want to, this would be interesting for me.
I don't believe there's another one in Amarillo, but they're in the Dallas area. Yeah, Wakeville, they sent us examples of other experiences where they own. You could probably go to their website.
All right. What is the name?
Just for brakes.
Just for brakes?
Just brakes.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close that discussion and leave it open up to discussions and questions from commissioners.
Well, I move to approve item three, P dash...
Motion made, seconded, and tossed. In discussion. All those in favor, ready, right hand? Opposed?
I recuse myself.
Passes at six, one. Okay, item four.
Item four is our flat file P dash... P dash eleven dash fifty-five, Tascosa Estates, unit number twelve. It's in addition to the city of Amarillo, being a replaid Tascosa Estates, unit number eight, in section eleven, block nine, BSNF survey, Potter County. Supply's not ready to be considered at this time. Staff recommends to be denied, but the stipulation can be resubmitted at a later date, with no additional cost to the applicant.
Second, I have a motion to deny this. Seconded, in discussion. All those in favor, ready, right hand? Opposed, same time? Motion to pass. Item five, no action is needed. Item five through item twelve. And then item thirteen has been withdrawn by applicant. No actions needed. Item fourteen, item fifteen has been withdrawn by applicant. No action needed. Item sixteen through twenty-seven. And then item twenty-eight, which is item of the public forum, time is referred to citizen, the county, and city, and the planning concern, per the commission, take no action on any issue or any comments.